Progress is actually going very tiny. We have candidates for seats representing North Caldwell and the West Essex Regional Board of Education, followed then by candidates for the North Caldwell Borough Council, and finally candidates for the position of Mayor of North Caldwell. My name is Donna Warren. I'll be here running tonight. The League, as a nonpartisan organization, never supports or opposes political parties or candidates. The League name, logo, event, or any materials from the event cannot be used in a way that could lead a viewer or reader to infer League support or opposition to a candidacy. Questions tonight have been solicited from the public in advance. Our format is each candidate will be able to give a two-minute opening and closing statement. We'll have a question and answer session. Each candidate will have one minute to answer. We will also allow all candidates to give a 30-second rebuttal if they want to after each candidate has answered. The timer will hold up a card warning where you have 30 seconds left, and then a stop card when your time is up. We'll start alphabetically, then rotating. So we're starting now with the Board of Education candidates. We have three candidates for two seats representing North Caldwell and the West Essex Regional Board of Education. The candidates are Brian Trauman, Deborah Hollenstad, and Anthony Prinzo. We'll start first with Ms. Hollenstad for a two-minute opening statement.
Thank you. Good evening. Some of you already know me here as Jack, Katie, and Ellie's mom. Some of you know me as the co-author of a book called Survivor's Club, a bestseller that's read by seventh graders at West Essex, written about my dad, survivor of the Auschwitz death camp. He's front and center, of course, here. Some know me as the neighbor that you never look in the eye because if you do, you might be sent home with a puppy you didn't know you wanted. We foster dogs in my house. I hope, though, after tonight, you also know me as somebody who will be an earnest and an exceptional advocate for West Essex students. Someone prepared to step onto the board and bring a unique set of skills from a 24-year career in journalism and communications. Someone ready to listen to the incredible board members on here tonight, who already sit on the board, veterans who I know have a lot to teach me as well, and I hope to add a parent's perspective to the mix. I decided to run, and you may know by the lawn signs out, I'm running alongside Brian Trauman down there, when we realized that if we didn't, the nine-member board next year would only have one single person who has kids enrolled in the district. One person with a child enrolled in the district. And I do really value what the veteran board members bring to the table, and I respect anyone's willingness to step up and do this and put yourself out there, but I also think it's critical that the district be represented by some parent voices. I think no one has a more immediate or vested interest in West Essex success than parents like me. I have an eighth, a tenth, and a twelfth grader, so three kids across the middle school and the high school. I see firsthand what's working, and I see where there's room for growth. A lifetime ago, is that my stop? I thought I'd spend my career in education. I majored in education at Washington University in St. Louis, and here I am, returning to my roots, hopefully with your support.
Thank you. Mr. Prinzo.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for coming out. My name is Tony Prinzo. You can call me Tony instead of Anthony. I'm a former member of the West Essex Board of Education. I served as vice president in my first term. Also, I am on the Wokers Pond Conservancy, and I served as vice president on the Camp Waienuke Commission. So I have a unique perspective from many different areas within the town. Professionally, I have a forensic accountant. I have my own practice. I'm very well-versed in taxation, financing, many aspects of the financial aspect of West Essex. Also, my wife is a school teacher, a high school teacher, so I bring her perspective to the table, too, hearing from her teachers, what they need, what they want, what they require. Also, my two kids, children, sorry, did graduate West Essex High School, and I'm proud to say that they got a wonderful education there. And I'm rerunning for my position on the board because when I left last time, I think there was still work to be done, just like they think there's work to be done in any school. All schools need some area of improvement. There's no doubt about that. That's why I'm rerunning for my position. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Trauman.
Thanks. Hi, everybody. I'm Brian Trauman. I'm the proud father of a seventh grader, and a tenth grader, and a fifth-grade teacher. Well, not a parent of a fifth-grade teacher. Proud husband of a fifth-grade teacher. Despite that, I still want to be your representative for the West Essex Regional School District Board of Education. The reason for my interest in this is I'm passionate about education, particularly because I've got kids in the district. My passion goes way back. I volunteered for kindergarten as a teacher. I taught law school at NYU Law for a number of years. I'm on the board of one of the largest children's literacy charities in New York City focused on helping kids and parents get invested with reading. But more locally, I was a volunteer here in this school for seven years, a part of the Art Renaissance program. If you've got kids in this district, it's a fantastic program. It's about broadening kids' horizons through art. Four years in the gold school. I was the vice president of student events for the NCPE. That's the North Caldwell Partners for Education. In that role during COVID, I helped to bring in three new programs to help kids with their emotional well-being, as well as their community relatedness. And then, most recently, I was the treasurer for the West Essex PTO, Parent Teacher Organization, focused on finance and resources. And so I want to bring all of that, as well as my just general passion, to the West Essex Board because, like Tony said, there's a lot more to do. I think the school is doing a tremendous job with those things I just listed, broadening horizons, emotional well-being, certainly academics and athletics, but community involvement, finances, resources. But we can do a little bit better. There's a huge need for a balance between the emotional well-being and our academic rigor, and we need some folks who've got kids in the district who can see that firsthand, understand what we need, understand how the school's responding to it, and that's why I'm running, and I hope you'll vote with me. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Let's move to the first question. Do you think the district is providing a good education for students? What is the most important change that needs to be made to ensure this? We'll start with Mr. Prinzo.
Sure. Can you repeat the question again?
Yes. Do you think the district is providing a good education for students? What is the most important change that needs to be made to ensure this?
I think the district provides an excellent education for the children. I think when you look at the statistics of how this school does in terms of its testing versus the state averages, it does extremely well. Even during COVID, you saw that the grades for the last five years on the SATs, the ACTs, have increased. If you look at the last year, which was 2021, I think the average score for a West Essex student on the SAT was 1260, whereby the average for the state of New Jersey was 1,075, somewhere in that area. Where does it need to improve? Is that the second part of the question?
What's the most important change?
The important change is to keep up with the times and what's changing, as in computers, engineering, things like that, because it's always a changing environment in education.
Thank you. Mr. Trauman.
Sure. Thanks. So, yeah, I think we provide a very good education. I think there's a lot of room for improvement, and I think the school is doing a lot towards that. And what I mean is, if you look at, so what Tony's mentioned is relative to the state average. I'd like to look at ourselves as a little bit better than the state average, and certainly we are. We're about 112 out of 406 schools in the state. It's top 28%. I'd like to be a bit better. Our education on academics, our standardized test scores, which are a big piece of how we get into college, closer to mic, thanks, is we, our scores are lower than they've been. Just this Monday's superintendent's report shows how our scores have decreased during COVID, as well as compared to 2019 before COVID. I think we can do a lot better with that. What's most important is, I think, instilling the confidence in our kids, rational confidence, not just a pat on the back that says, you can do whatever you like, but to really focus on getting the skills necessary to achieve that. Again, oh, sure.
Ms. Hollenstad.
Oh, thank you. Oh, thank you. So I do think that our kids get a great education. I wouldn't be sending my own three kids here if I didn't truly believe that. But as these guys said, there is room for improvement. And one of the areas that I see room for growth in is closing the gap between our underserved and our minority population as compared to the rest of the population. We performed, our proficiency scores were about, I think we were ranked around 110, 112, depending on math or English, in the state. But when it comes to our performance numbers, which means our closing our gap between, you know, the underserved and minority population within West Essex district, we scored 221 out of 406, and there's room for growth there. I also think we need to be really forward-looking. There is a huge population explosion right now happening in at least three of the four sending towns, and that's something we've got to be on the ball and got to be forward-looking with.
Thank you. Any rebuttals?
I think with the rankings that you were just talking about, they can be very dissuasive. It depends on what you're looking at. If you look at NewJerseyNiche.com, they rank West Essex as number three in the state. If you look at, you know, U.S. World Report, we're ranked 53rd. So again, you have to take that with what the criteria is.
So those numbers I was talking about were just proficiency for math? So those are based on numbers, just for, yeah, exactly.
Moving on. How do you assess the West Essex culture and climate? What would you do to improve them? Mr. Trauman.
Sure. West Essex culture and climate?
Yes.
Is that right? Well, there's a strategic analysis going on now that school has undertaken, and some of you probably responded to a lot of this. There were surveys of the students, the faculty, the parents, the teachers earlier this year. And I tend to focus on what people have said that they need rather than what I think they need. Parents have asked for greater focus on some of the classes and college guidance. I tend to read that as de-stressing some of the kids. There are other parents who've said our standards are maybe too low for our students. And so I come back to, again, the balance between emotional well-being and academic rigor. A lot of the students have focused on the culture and climate relative to open-mindedness of both the faculty as well as other students. I'd like to learn a little bit more about what our students are looking for.
Ms. Hollenstad.
So some of the results of that same survey that Brian was just talking about also showed a real concern among administration, among parents, about cyberbullying. They rank that as a very high concern. I can tell you, as a mom, my children have come home too many times telling me that they have heard the N-word, have seen squasticas at the school. I know that there are HIV laws that have actually been even tightened up this year, and I'm really happy about that. But what I think we need to remember is to never take our eye off the ball. We cannot, I like that the district has really been taking these kinds of, you know, making some, I think, real change in this area. I think it's going to come down to really staying on top of training our administration, training our teachers, and not just this year, but next year, and the year after, and the year after that, and also bringing in people to talk to the students so that they understand, especially now with those firmer laws in New Jersey. Wow, if you make a mistake, that's going on your record, you know? And so I think for kids to really understand what's at stake, and parents as well, parents are now liable as well. That's important.
Thank you. Mr. Prinzo.
I think the West Essex School District has taken big strides in doing the climate and culture and looking at it. They've recently hired St. Elizabeth College and brought in a program with them, which is a three-year program, which specifically looks at climate and culture within the school. They take statistical data, they talk to teachers, they talk to students, and they put together some type of plan to help the teachers, students become more aware and to correct anything that's there in terms of culture and the climate within West Essex. There's also peer groups that they have where senior or upperclassmen talk with the lowerclassmen and get a feel for what's actually happening in the school in terms of what you're saying, Debbie, with HIV and things like that. So they're getting it from the actual student to the upperclassmen, and then bringing it to the administration. So I think they're trying to cover old bases, but like we said before, there's always room for improvement.
Thank you. Any rebuttals?
Sure. I'll take it. Thanks. Yep. So that program, St. Elizabeth, is doing a nice job. They're also working with an organization called Teach For Results. It's all data-driven, and Tony and I are numbers guys. I'm the chief data officer at a company, and I love that we're focused on data. But the sentiment, like you said, there's a lot of room for improvement. This is in the August 3rd board presentation, if you want to take a look at it. Just 65% of our parents said they were satisfied overall with the school. 60% would strongly recommend it. 20%, only 20% of the students felt like they had good school-life balance. So I think there's some room for improvement there, and I love that we're working on that using data to inform our decisions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Trauman. Anyone else? Okay. Moving on. Does the district do enough for students who are not involved in or not interested in sports? And we'll start with Ms. Hollenstad.
I will say that I think it's fantastic that we have such an exceptional sports program. And I think it's great that our administration, our school supports that. It brings a lot of pride to students. It opens doors for a lot of students. But I think sometimes we need, the school does need to make sure that we're putting just as much focus on academics. And I hear that, again, in the backseat of my car. How come the, you know, all I hear about is field hockey on the, you know, announcements? From a policy, you know, place, though, from the board's perspective, I do think it does come down to, you know, I think it's sending the correct message that academics matters just as much. It is something that has concerned me over the years, and I think college, the college game has changed quite a bit in the last couple of years. Right now, schools, if you talk to colleges, yeah, okay. I'll get down to it.
Thank you. Mr. Prinzo.
I think West Essex has a good variety for people who are not just sports-driven. You have an excellent band and music program where they receive awards year after year. There's other clubs there for computers. There's clubs for mechanical engineering. There's clubs for robotics. So there are things out there for these students other than sports. And like Debbie was saying, you know, sports, the ones that get scholarship for sports is a very small percentage. But for academics, you know, there are many more scholarships available academically. So I think there's a good balance already there for the students, but you have to apply to them, and you have to, you know, get yourself into them.
Thank you. Mr. Trauman.
Thanks. I think the school does a tremendous job in this area, and compared to other schools, and certainly compared to any of the schools that we went to as kids, there are so many activities during school and after school, and my kids are involved in sports, soccer, dance, but also in the arts, student government, a number of clubs and activities. There are opportunities to get published, have different classes, creative writing, for instance. There are a lot of opportunities. Whether the students are all really challenged to take part in them, I don't know that I can say. But the importance of athletics, academics, and all of these extracurricular activities are incredibly important, not just for getting into college and having a well-rounded resume, but for being a well-rounded person, meeting people that are outside of your academic circles or athletic circles. And I hope that everybody's taking advantage of those.
Thank you. Any rebuttals? Okay. Moving on. What should the school board and the district do to retain teachers and staff in light of the high number of recent resignations and retirements? Mr. Prinzo.
Sure. Repeat the question, and try to write it down, so I don't have to ask you to repeat it.
What should the school board and district do to retain teachers and staff in light of the high number of recent resignations and retirements?
Well, from a school board perspective, the board itself has nothing to do with the hiring of teachers or recruiting of teachers. That's all done at the administrative level. What West Essex could do, and I think it does a good job already, is, one example of it, is when they just hired a director for special education. There were numerous people trying to apply for that position. That just goes to show how well-received and perceived is West Essex High School with people wanting to come in. And I think the mass exodus from the education is not based upon West Essex alone. That's a national problem, a statewide problem, which is stemmed from other issues, not from West Essex.
Mr. Trauman.
Sure. So I agree with most of that. There's something beyond our district, but there are also district-specific things that we can and should be doing. And we look at that same survey, I think it's in the April minutes or April presentation of the Board of Education. Remember, they, closer to the mic, they look not just at students and parents and the board, but also the teachers. And there are a number of teachers who felt that they didn't have all the communications that they wished that they had had, that they weren't included in some of the decisions that affected them. Many of them felt like they had the resources that they need, but it's still a lower number than I might have expected. And so I think there's some work in understanding what's important to our faculty's personal and professional satisfaction that'll help them stay. I'll also say, just before I go here, that we've had a lot of teachers who are here for dozens of years, more than 20 years, and I think that's a testament to the quality of our school.
Thank you. Ms. Hollenstad.
Back-to-school night always makes me very proud because I am very impressed with the caliber of teachers that we have. But I do think that that College of St. Elizabeth survey that we all keep referring to, I think we need to take it, and we really need to listen to what the teachers said in that survey. They said, the administration actually pointed out that they're seeing teacher burnout, staff burnout. The survey showed that there's a concern over a lack of diversity in staff, a lack of planning time for teachers. That was a biggie that came up. I see a teacher in the room who happens to be married to Brian nodding her head. That's a really big concern, and we need to look at ways to make sure that teachers are getting the time and the resources that they need. Right now, they're facing some serious uphill battles. COVID learning losses has made things, that's made things incredibly difficult in classrooms. How do you help? You have this diverse, some kids thrived, they did fine, and some kids are really, really hurting and really struggling. I know that other districts, districts that, you know, we'd like to be always on par with, Livingston, Milburn, Shoregirls, we bench back ourselves against them, they've been bringing in experts to teach, teach, train in differentiated learning. That's something, you know, that could really help our teachers manage that.
Thank you, Ms. Hollenstad.
You're going to have to get that cane for me. Sorry.
No problem. Okay. Any rebuttals?
The only thing I'd like to say is that I think the students, sorry, the teachers now are getting a lot more input to the administration of what they're seeing, what they're feeling. I think those feelings are becoming more evident now based upon, like, the St. Elizabeth program that is in place, so they do have a voice now. And I think that's going to be interesting. Like Debbie said, some of these issues are COVID-driven, and the pressure on the teachers is not a West Essex thing. It's more of a universal and COVID problem.
I would agree with that. It is absolutely a national thing, but locally, how we address it is what's really going to matter for our students.
Mr. Trauman? Anything to add?
No rebuttal.
Okay. Thank you. This seems to be the perennial question. Should school board members have children in the district now? We'll start with Mr. Trauman.
I think it's, I can understand very well the passion that one might have to be on the school board without kids in the district. You care about your community, you care about the schools, you care about your property, your town. That all makes perfect sense to me. But I think, especially this year, where we're coming out of COVID, where things are very different from where they were before COVID, 2019, I think it's really important to understand the kids' perspective. And the school board is going to have somebody from the student body as part of the school board, non-voting member, and I think that's good, but that's one person. But I've got two kids who come home and tell me everything that's going on, from, you know, the bathroom doors don't lock, to this teacher did this, and here's some bullying that's going on, and have you seen this TikTok video, together with all the other emotional support needs that our kids have, as well as the academic needs. I think it's important to have that perspective.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Hollenstad.
I agree completely with Brian. I really value the expertise of the members who are sitting on the board right now, but I don't think it's ever been more important than ever to have a parent's voice on the board. Things have changed dramatically in the last couple of years, and we will do surveys, I'm sure the board will do surveys, to see exactly what's changed. But in advance of that, I think parents have a better, they know what questions to ask on those surveys. And I think, I'm out of time, oh, 30 seconds. I think, you know, the stress the kids are under right now, the anxiety, the feeling behind, completely and totally behind when they're taking tests, we feel it every single day, and I think to have a parent in the room asking the right questions and making sure we're setting the right policy, I think, is truly valuable right now.
Mr. Prinzo.
I think it's important, but it's not the most important thing, because if you look at overall Board of Education, the three of us plus the other ones that are still on the board, we represent the entire town, all 6,000, 6,600 residents of the town, not just the 550 students that go to West Essex from North Caldwell. And you need an independent voice. I'm not saying a parent's voice is not important. There's also certain channels it has to go through, where there's a hierarchy if there's an issue, if there's a question. But again, a board of education person is supposed to be independent, taking an outside look, and making sure that the school's run in an effective, efficient manner.
Thank you. Any rebutts? Ms. Hollenstad.
When we elect senators, we say they have to reside in the state. They have to be a U.S. citizen for nine years, and they have to reside in the state. The votes that they cast in Congress actually affect, and they really matter to the entire country. They're setting laws that affect the entire country. But we want our senators to live and breathe their state. And likewise, for those exact same reasons, I really think that we need to have representatives, especially again right now, who live and breathe the West Essex district.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Trauman.
Thanks. I agree with, well, certainly with what Debbie just said, and Tony, I agree that it's a factor. It's not the only thing to consider. And so I hope everybody here is listening to everything we're saying and not just saying, I'm going to vote for the two people who have kids in the district. That alone is not a qualification. As far as the town goes, yeah, this is your town. This is going to help drive, if we've got the schools operating the right way, more people will want to live in this town. I know that I moved to this town for the North Caldwell schools, and it was a great decision. But to move into, oh, sorry, it's a stop already?
Yeah. Thank you.
I'm just passionate.
Prinzo, no?
No.
Okay.
I can't remember.
Yeah, I think we all rebuttal.
Great. Last question before closing statements. What, in your opinion, is the role of school board member? And we'll start with Ms. Hollenstad.
I think a school board member is a policymaker for the school. I think a school board member holds the superintendent accountable, makes sure that the superintendent is, you know, performing as we would expect. I think they're financial stewards for the school, and that's how I view the role.
Thank you. Mr. Prinzo.
The role of a school board member, I think I just covered that in the previous question, is to ensure that you represent the entire district, all, all citizens, all population of North Caldwell, but also the most important thing is, like I said, to make sure the schools run effectively, efficiently, and they are fiscally responsible. You have one person that you're answering to, and one person that you really work for, and that is the superintendent of schools. That is the only person. And as for policy, yes, you make policy. However, I would say 90% of the policy comes out of the and that is the superintendent of schools. That is the only person. And as for policy, yes, you make policy. However, I would say 90% of the policy comes out of the New Jersey Department of Education or the New Jersey School Boards. They come up with the policies that the school should adhere to, or recommends the school should adhere to. If there's other things that do come up, the school does have the ability, and the Board of Education does have the authority to make policy and procedure to do that.
Thank you. Any?
Well, so let me answer as well, if you don't mind. Treat this as an answer instead of a rebuttal for timing purposes. So they're, they're both right. The, the responsibility of the Board of Education is defined by law, by policy, and so they're both right. The one thing that I think they, they, well, maybe two things that I'd add to that are that we're also mandated to, to focus on the educational welfare of all the students, regardless of, let's see, there's race, creed, sex, social standing, and something else. Religion, thank you. Yeah, let's go with that. Oh, and ability, physical and mental ability. So I think that's, that fits together with our HIV, that's harassment, intimidation, and bullying rules. So that, that's something that we're responsible for. And just a, a smaller tweak on, on what you said, Tony, certainly we work with the superintendent, but things like the St. Elizabeth study and other things where the superintendent and others have said, hey, we need to take action on this. It's our responsibility to work with the superintendent, oversee those recommendations, and make our own.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other, any, any rebuttals? Now moving to closing statements, we'll start with Mr. Tramm.
Okay. We've had a lot of time to express our views, and hopefully it was enough. Certainly, we're open to other discussions later, but if you're in the West Essex Regional School District, this is the last six years of your child living at home and, and working with you. It's, it's the last time for you to give them everything you want. Don't look at me like that, I know you're leaving. She's already packed, by the way. But this is the time for them to get the skills they need to succeed. It's not just about memorizing formulas and dates, but it's, it's that toolbox of how are they going to be ready for life? How are they going to develop the critical thinking skills to take care of themselves? Now, I've already voted. I voted for me. If, if my, if my passion resonates with you in any way, if you like my, I don't know that I got it across, but my measured approach to decision-making, understand the pros and cons of things, if you want a Board of Ed member with two kids in the district that understands to some degree what's going on in their lives, insight on how things are on the ground, I hope you'll vote for me. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Mr. Prinza.
All I can say is that, you know, I am a former board member, and for me to rejoin the Board of Education, I have no learning curve. I mean, I can jump right in, I know exactly how the, the board works, I know the policies, I know the roles of a Board of Education member. And I think that after what has happened, you know, globally within the past two years with COVID, I don't think now is the time, because we're just about getting back on our feet, to have new people, which I'm, I'm glad to work with these people, to, to start learning their role. I don't think the children of West Essex and the students can afford to take that small step backwards. I think it's the time to move forward and have somebody who already knows their role.
Thank you. Ms. Hollins-Depp.
This is a very fresh time in the world, and I can't think of a better time to have some fresh voices on the board. And I would just say that anyone who's ever hired me, I don't think they've ever worried about a learning curve. That's one thing I will say, I move fast. But I do appreciate, I really do appreciate your, your sentiment. I mentioned at the outset that I am the daughter of a Holocaust survivor. One thing that my dad taught me was the limitless value of education. He always said, you know, everything was taken away from me in Auschwitz, my clothes, my, my family, by his father, his brother, his name, he became prisoner pre-1148. Education is one thing no one can ever take away from you, so cherish it. That is something I never forgot, my dad teaching me, and you can bet that if I'm elected, I will be an ardent advocate for an incredible school community that your kids and this community will cherish.
Thank you, candidates. Just a 30-second break, then we'll invite the candidates.